I think it's close enough to 8:45 to open the hearing on 75 Warren. Is everybody on here for 75 Warren Avenue?
Yeah.
All right, we're opening the hearing on 75 Warren.
Great.
This isn't a continuing hearing.
This is the first.
This is the first.
Yeah, I mean unless you have them secretly.
We have this on the agenda.
We opened it immediately.
It was open and continued with the last meeting.
Okay. This is a continuation. Just out of curiosity, is any of the material that we're going to be looking at tonight, material that nobody saw in the cycle?
I guess. We made the adjustments based on what you had asked us for.
But you didn't submit it to our consultants of the planning office?
Yeah. And then I sent it to you electronically.
No, but those were written.
They were like, right, and then there was one set of plans.
Oh, you've got a set of plans?
Yeah, but they're going to show.
But did Kim and they ever had a chance to look at them?
I didn't get the plan electronically. I only got one set of plans.
One set of plans.
And I.
So the answer is yes.
Did not get these building elevations and colors until now.
Until right now?
Until right now. I only.
No, we submitted a full packet two months ago with all the elevation, the color plots, the site plan in detail. What we've revised since our site walk was some of the parking adjustments that you had asked for. The lighting plan was submitted in detail as well. So what we did was we took the existing plan and the proposed plan, and we showed in detail the parking, which seemed to be a major topic of the walk through. We also put in place, which I submitted to Elizabeth, the detailed truck analysis, weight, limit, capacity, and stuff that was also requested at the walk through.
Okay, so what? Let me just tell you right off the bat, since our consultants haven't had a chance to review the new material.
Okay.
We're going to have to continue. I just wanted to tell you that right up front.
Well, they've reviewed everything except for the parking piece, which you had asked us to.
Did you revise the landscaping at all?
We did revise the landscaping.
There you go.
Okay, and was it submitted together? Have you discussed with Kim?
Basically, what she asked us to put on the plan.
Yeah.
Did she see the thing?
Well, listen, we have a certain process of submission and review so that the planning board doesn't see everything raw the night of the presentation, but we can look to our consultants for advice.
Right.
We can look to the planner for advice. People need to be able to look at this material, make their comments, and give us their comments.
Okay, part of that was my fault, but I think I ended up.
Well, you've only been here four days.
Okay.
Gee whiz.
But I just said some revisions yesterday, right?
So I submitted yesterday the revisions as requested by the interim town planner.
Susan Higgin.
Correct. That were requested by you, the board.
Yeah.
And so we submitted those along.
Yes, yesterday.
We won't have had a chance for people, our consultants, to have reviewed them.
Okay. Can I just, one quick question, did we make any changes to the screen at all?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so it's the exact same?
We didn't make changes at all.
That Kim had.
Well, you just said.
We talked to, we added the table which summarized the screen. That's what we added. There wasn't a table on it.
I thought people, there were some suggestions about additional screening that we were talking about. For one thing, additional screening from the water department, the old water department director's house downtown, across the way. We talked about that at the site walk. That didn't show up on the site plan?
There's no new screen shown on there.
No new screen.
Just what we had, what we did add was a table summarizing the complete screen.
And in any event, Kim hasn't had a chance.
I saw the old one.
The old one.
And you had comments.
You did, at the site walk.
At the site walk, we talked about adding.
So you didn't make the changes we suggested at the site walk?
Kim made a suggestion.
Yeah. The answer is yes, you didn't make those changes.
I guess we have to make those changes.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and do the presentation anyway, and then we'll make our comments and see where we go from there at the end. So if you could maybe, let's see, given this about forty, forty-five minutes, if you could hold your presentation to like fifteen minutes or so, we could then have questions and comments from the board and our consultants, and then open it up for comments from the public. Are you going to be making the presentation?
I'm going to do part of it, Trevor, if you want to start off.
Introduce yourselves.
Do you want me to introduce the team?
Sure.
To start? Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for letting us be here. It's been a long time coming, and it's been a very exciting process. Granted, it's the first time we've ever done anything quite like this, and it's been an incredible learning curve, and we've enjoyed every step of the way.
Because we always.
We call it our meeting.
Well, I'm actually being very serious. I find this fascinating as a young entrepreneur. I look at this as being part of a very interesting.
A bureaucratic message.
It's been a lot of fun. So that being said, this is my business partner, Brian Whittamore. We're going to be presenting on behalf of Obelies, represented by Kevin Whittamore behind me and my wife Lisa, and then Peter Gammey is our civil engineer.
All right, and just to interrupt you for a second.
Yeah.
We are, I'm Al Agle, the chairman of the board.
I'm David Mendelssohn.
I'm Suzanne Rice.
Steve Oppenheimer.
Roy Chalamet.
And Betsy Ware is the new planner.
Been here for people.
Five days.
Five days.
So we are Pure Solutions is the name of our company. We are currently occupied, occupying part of 75 Warren Avenue. It's also occupied by Weston Landscape and Obelies. Obelies operates their oil business lumber trucks out of the site. They own the land since the early 1920s. The idea behind the proposed site is to continue to further organize the three businesses, defining space for operation, improve daily site efficiencies, and really it's about the overall improvement to the site. Obelies Hardware is operating their oil trucks and their lumber trucks out of the site. A lot of their operations are solely contained to this building right here. Weston Landscape, which is also using 75 Warren Avenue, is really site storage for their truck fleet and other landscaping equipment. There's a little bit of indoor storage in that north building as well. They have been using the site for a little over 20 years, and there's no real, there's no changes at all to their operations based on this proposal. It really is, again, just trying to organize the site further. And then there's Pure Solutions, which is Brian and myself. We are operating now for nine years out of the site. We are a service company that provide organic mosquito and tick control to roughly 700-plus customers in the Weston area. We have a fleet of five trucks. We arrive at 7:00 a.m. in the morning. We leave at 7:30. We don't come back to the site during the day. We return to the site between 4:00 and 5:00, and that is Monday through Friday. Again, the idea behind this is to really create more defined areas for these three businesses that have been operating on this site for nine-plus years, obviously continuing with Obelies for a very long time here. Real improvements that we're looking to make are drainage improvements, reduce runoff, as well as improved water quality, reorganization and structure of the existing site, which I've discussed a couple of times, and the ability to move equipment and some vehicles into existing buildings and our proposed buildings to actually get some of that parking area inside and contained. The current conditions of Pure we're operating, we're not increasing the number of trucks. We are really just trying to get both locations. Currently, we have a location at 582 Boston Post Road. You've probably seen our smart car on the post road. That's kind of our front-of-the-house operations. And then our field specialists are operating out of this site. So the idea is to, in efforts to continue our company culture and growth, to bring everybody inside and to really make our operation more efficient. The office operation as of now, we have four full-time office personnel that make up the customer service, sales, and marketing divisions of our company. This includes the two owners, which is Brian and myself. Our office hours are from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The office personnel will arrive in the morning, park their cars in the building. Customers do not visit the office, so there's going to be no real outside traffic coming in from our clients in the Weston area. The proposed building is 5,000 square feet with a 2,500-square-foot block to the office space. The building will contain all daily operations of Pure Solutions. The proposed color is sandstone, which I've put in the packet for you, and with a blue trim, and that is in efforts to keep with the Obelies tradition of color, and they are using blue to accent their brand. And again, the color palette is in the back of the packet for you to look at. One of the things that came up at the site walk was fire code. I've spoken with Weston Town Fire Inspector, and there are no required sprinklers for the building. We will have smoke-covered carbon monoxide detectors in the building, but there are no required sprinklers based on the square footage we fall underneath the required requirements for that. In terms of water, one of the really unique aspects of our business that we've put in place since the beginning is our rainwater collection system. We have multiple 2,100-gallon tanks that we collect all of our rainwater off of the roof of the north building there, and we're filling those up every time it rains, and we dilute our organic solutions that we then go out and service properties with, which is for organic mosquito and tick control. So since day one, we actually haven't used any valuable drinking water from the town of Weston. We are super pumped about that aspect of our business, and we continue to make that commitment in adding one additional tank in the proposed building to be able to collect the water coming off of the new building roof line. In terms of water for the building, there's water service that comes directly down Warren Avenue. We want to be connecting to that. We don't have a huge water demand. Really, it's just for sinks and flushing toilets. In terms of storm water management and drainage, Peter's put in place a pretty detailed, a very detailed diagram for that, so if you want, it'll take a minute to go over that.
Yeah.
We can kind of get into that.
Sure. Let me just back up just quickly because I think traffic was a big issue. The existing traffic, Pure Solutions, five employees, five trucks, somewhere between 20 and 25 trips per day. Weston Landscape, they've got 20 employees, 20 trucks. You're looking at total trips today somewhere between 90 and 100. And then you have Obelies. They've got three people with six trucks, but there's only two people that drive the trucks, so roughly 12 trips per day. The bottom line is there's somewhere between 30 and 40, 130 and 140 trips today. And then the only increase in trips is the four office personnel that will be coming. So they're going to add a.m. and p.m. trips, eight if they go to lunch, maybe another four trips, total of 12 trips. So today you've got 130 to 140 trips. After the building gets put in and moves in, you'll have an additional 10 to 12 trips per day. So it's not as if they're moving this enormous fleet to the site. So I just wanted to make, that seemed to be one of the key issues.
So you're increasing traffic by 10%?
Less than 10%.
And what more? Back up. I see two parking patterns.
Yeah.
Could you just run through those?
Yeah, and it's just, this is existing, and right now it's pretty random that cars are sort of parked. All of these areas is open gravel parking.
How many cars?
Roughly 20 employee cars, and there's roughly 20 actual trucks of Weston Landscape you. And then you've got Obelies that has a couple of personal cars, and they all park all of its vehicles inside, actually. So, and then you've got.
Everything's really self-contained to that middle building, which is the truck garage and has operated as a truck garage for many years.
And then you have Pure Solutions, which they operate out of the back here, and they've got five employees, so they have five vehicles coming and going a.m. and p.m. on that. So it's just schematic to kind of represent the type of thing. And there's a lot of other equipment. There's a shed here, and there's bins that are out around. The idea is to, they put all their plows here. Once Pure Solutions moves out of here, Weston Landscape will have all of this space, and they'll be able to put a lot of their plows and all of that equipment inside, so it's actually going to clean up the site significantly. So this plan is just trying, again, we're not going to stripe it because a lot of this is all gravel, but this is the type of layout. You get 20 Weston Landscape trucks. Some of them have trailers on the back, so, you know, some layout like this inside the new facility. As Trevor pointed out, they'll be able to keep their five trucks inside the facility. When they take them out, the employees will be able to park inside or some parking on the outside here.
I'm confused. You just said five trucks, so you're getting additional trucks?
There was, you had four.
We had four.
And you added one more.
Yeah, it's currently there today, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just purchased a fifth. We just purchased a fifth truck. So we wanted to show that.
How do those trucks and trailers maneuver at the end of the driveway there?
These guys are incredible, truck drivers.
This is what they do.
This is what they do. I mean, they can get a trailer into the tightest space, and they do it all day, all throughout Weston, and when they come in.
Lots of times, the vehicle will come in this way, they'll pull right here, and then they'll back the trailer in like that.
It's impressive.
And where do their cars go in this scenario? Employees' cars for Weston?
So it's going to be kind of the same scenario that we're proposing for Pure, which was what we already do, is they pull a truck out, and then they put their personal car into that space to really keep with the organization of the site. And that's, you know, the whole idea behind this is to really start to clean up what has been kind of a free-for-all, if you will, of parking where you can. And by putting the proposed building in, we really start to define space as well as open up a lot of that northern barn area for equipment and stuff, you know, to be able to really get that nice structure on the site.
So this is a civil site plan. The new building is going in right here. Electric will come off a utility pole underground and run into the side of the building here. As Trevor mentioned, there's an existing water line that comes down that services the residential and.
Is there water in this building?
In Obelies?
They're running.
Yeah. And so what's happened to that, as you mentioned, there's very little demand. It's basically a bathroom and a kitchen.
Kitchenette.
Yeah.
And a sink.
The bathroom will have a line coming out to a septic tank and into a pump chamber, which is going to be pumped up to a soil absorption system up in this area because of the high groundwater. It had to be raised, and that's a retaining wall to enable that to be put up here. Bill Murphy designed the system. He submitted plans to the board health. He believes that although they have, the only reason they haven't been approved yet is because the board health wants a wall to be actually designed by the, so that has to be done, but everything else should be all set there.
Okay, just to let you know, that's another reason why we have to continue the hearing because we couldn't sign off on this until the board of health has signed off, just to let you know.
Yeah, that's fine. There's no gas out in this area. And so the storm drainage, what I've done is I've created three different systems. System one here, two here, and then the third one is more of a water quality improvement system, which is collecting pavement runoff and going to catch basins with hoods, sumps and hoods, and then bringing it around to a dry well. When I looked at this whole site, we've got roughly just under two acres of total site, and the area that we're actually impacting is roughly 7,800 square feet, so a very small portion of the total parcel. So I looked at what are we actually changing on this site? And essentially, what we're looking is a new building, of course, 5,000 square feet. We've got this sort of hatched area here, which today is gravel, and we have this little hatched area here, which is also gravel. And we're going to pave these two sections, which will match up to the existing pavement, which comes through here. So the new changes going from essentially a dense gravel parking lot to an impervious surface is the building and these two areas here. So I looked at, did the hieroglyphs, looking at existing conditions, what's the runoff today, looked at the proposed conditions going to the impervious surface, and what the runoff character is, peak volume, peak rate of flow and volume, compared the two, and said, this is what I need to mitigate for the change. So I've got that number and looked at ways we could best mitigate it. I'm going to put a typical storm protect chamber system underneath the parking lot here. It's crushed stone. We're going to capture two areas of existing roof runoff. This building here with downspouts, we're going to capture that, and a portion of this building here. And that alone completely mitigates the increased peak rate of runoff. It only captures about half of the volume that we're looking for, but it solves the peak rate. This system back here, which collects the roof runoff, the roof runoff collects in the gutter, it's going to go down to those tanks, are those 2,100 or 2,400 gallons?
21 each.
2,100-gallon tanks, three of them, that they use for their business. When those tanks and if those tanks fill up, they will overflow into the system that I have in the back here. That system reduces peak rate of flow again from two-year up to about 50-year, and it stores another 640 cubic feet of runoff. So the combination of volume storage here and volume storage here mitigates that delta between pre- versus post runoff.
Are you talking about lighting?
I can't.
Yeah, about lighting, yeah.
Does somebody have a lighting plan?
Yep, we have a lighting plan. We submitted it in the original proposal. We are using dark sky compliant lighting.
So there's a new building there. If you want to describe these lights, let's see. The table has existing lighting here. Total existing lighting on the site today is 48,190 lumens. The, after, there's a number of lights that are going to be taken down and some new ones put up around the new building. After that's all done, the total lumens is 41,494, so a decrease of roughly 4,000, no, about 7,000.
7,000 lumens.
Yeah.
There's a couple of big culverts on the property, a couple of outdated, bigger lights that produce, you know, a lot of lumens, and those are the ones that are going to be coming down, the big spotlights, and we'll be replacing, or actually on the new building is going to be on dark sky compliant lighting.
So these light fixtures here may already be removed, and then the new ones going in around the building here.
On the back of the building too?
Yeah, the door.
And I can't, several fixtures on the back.
Yeah, there's, all the triangles are the dark sky compliant fixtures on the building. You know, the key here was to try to reduce current lumens on the property.
Why are you putting those fixtures in the back, other than for the man doing it?
Well, for security purposes, we decided to put fixtures on the back. The lighting on this site has kind of always been security lighting. We don't operate really at night at all, so putting, giving some type of security for the building is important to us.
So what kind, I'm just going to go down here.
Well, I've got.
What kind of, are the motion detectors? I mean, are they on all the time?
They're on during the evening, yeah. So this is the rad lighting report in detail. If you want to look at it, you're welcome to have a copy of this, details of all the fixtures, lumen as well. I did submit this in the plan.
Do you have a copy of the lighting stuff either?
So you're welcome to have a copy of that as well, but yeah, they'll go on at night and.
It'd stay on all night?
Yeah.
I saw a cool diagram of it here somewhere.
Trevor, is there a reason they couldn't be oceanic? Or is it just?
Yeah.
You know, I've been concerned.
So there are no problems?
16.
Right. But wait a second, you just said it wouldn't be a problem to just put those, I mean, it's just for security.
It wouldn't be a problem at all to make an adjustment.
Yeah, because that would make us a little happier.
Okay, yeah.
Especially the neighbors happy.
Just that.
Pardon me?
The neighbors?
There's no one on, they can see the back of the building.
There is a water department in relationship to this.
It's on, it's down here. You normally have a plan that shows all the buildings around there.
So it is sort of just directly, I mean, if I'm taking the top of that as being north, I'm taking the bottom of it as being south, the water department's over there, so.
North and south, yeah.
Right there. Yeah, so there would be, you know, it's just like any time you can decrease lighting.
We have no problem making adjustments like that. Yeah, I made a note, and we'll submit that.
Thank you.
Glancing?
Glancing, yes.
You got a copy, right, Betsy? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think I'm happy to make multiple copies of the packet that I submitted for all, if you have a copy.
So this is what we presented before. There are a series of trees and shrubs going in, rhododendrons, arrow wood, and arbor bodies, I guess. Total of five, total of 10 sizes, three to four feet.
Where are they?
And they're located all along this edge here.
Just a line of them?
Yeah.
There's a lot of brush, you know, medium-sized wooden ground cover there, so this would be in addition to that existing.
I think your concern was the view coming across this direction here, and so what we could do is we could actually pull some of these up and just cluster more of that up than all of this.
How tall are they?
These are three to four feet in height.
Yeah.
Obviously.
It's kind of small, you're not going to string much with a three-foot-high plant.
Doesn't Steve from Weston Landscape, he's in here around here all the time?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Steve, he does watch.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they, I mean, I guess it's what we're trying, all in what we're trying to accomplish here. I mean, if, I mean, I don't know who's going to ever really be down at this dead end, you know, that would see, you know, again, if we were to put extra plants in here.
The people in the house right down there.
It's a vacant house now.
But it's not going to be.
Right. Go back to the site plan to show that house.
Maybe they can put up trees in there for us.
I got that up there. No, that's their house. No, there's another house right over here.
Isn't there affordable housing?
There's a proposed plan, yeah.
Exactly, it's in this area right here.
Yes, yeah, now the picture's turned. And I said before that the.
And you, I, I said before that the water house, or the water department house is over here, it's actually more over this way, the way the thing comes out.
So what I was pointing out was where we have this sort of screening going right along here, we could pull more of that down, cluster in this area to, or for that matter, we could put some, if they, if they allow us to put some across on the.
Anyway, this is one of those things that, you know, your LA, come up a little bit of a plan and run it by Kim. And she's happy.
When we were on, when we were on the sidewalk, we talked a little bit about what happens inside the garage.
Yeah.
One of the questions we had was what happens with water that, that, you're probably gonna have drains in the building. Is, is, is that gonna take care of, for example, some of the organic material that you're mixing? Is there gonna be an overflow? Are you gonna be washing vehicles inside the building?
So, yes, there will be, to answer your question, yes, there will be floor drains in the building. They will have, we'll have to go to a tight tank.
Where's that gonna be?
Tight tank will be just outside, right over in this area.
Can you show it yet on your plans?
No, because it hasn't been, we haven't gotten to that level of construction guidelines, basically.
You have it on. But I, I mean, I think we're gonna wanna know.
It's a, it's a below grade. It's on a surface, it's below grade, you know, it's all you're gonna see is a cover.
Yeah.
But we like it on a flat.
Is the special flood hazard area near there as well?
Has what?
Special flood hazard area near there as well. Elevation one thirty-five, I think. The flood plain, the western flood plain.
One thirty-five, and we're up at one fifty-three.
So you're out of the flood plain?
We're out of it, yes.
And where's the US wetlands?
Wetlands are actually, you can see them up here across the back here. So we're outside of the hundred.
That's the hundredth buffer, that's that dark line?
The, the, that's this line right through here. And we reviewed this with Michelle.
Okay, so you don't have to go to the Concom?
Correct. But we are making significant improvements to the drainage and collecting water quality.
So your, your organic material that you use, I mean, diluted with water.
Yeah.
Water soluble and stuff, it's presumably very concentrated. Do you have to go to the fire department or anybody in case there's a spill and they have to clean up stuff? Or what happens if something like that happens?
Right.
One of the delivery tanks ruptures?
We're dealing, well, in concentrate form, we're dealing with, you know, no more than a fifty-five gallon drum of concentrate on the property at any given time. It's what we order the product in, and, and the concentrate level that, or volume that it comes in. So we're not dealing with astronomical amounts of volume here that, you know, would have the ability to.
No, I understand. What are the risks of this material?
It's an EPA exempt essential oil blend. It's a national, national organic program compliant product. And we mix it, I mean, it's, it's about seventy-seven dollars a gallon, so it's very, very expensive. All of the materials that the product is contained in are compliant with the oils that are in the product, like wintergreen oil and power.
I assume all that.
Right, so there.
What, what's the risk in case something happened?
There, there is.
If there was a fire, I mean.
There's, there's, there's a minimal risk of product. No combustion, to answer your question, that element specifically, there's no combustible components to the product, so we don't have to worry about it being a fire hazard. We do, you know, take extra steps to, again, where it's so expensive per gallon. We have a, a system around the fifty-five gallon drum so that if anything were to happen, if it were to leak or, you know, the, for some reason it were to be punctured, it actually catches and collects the product in concentrate form. The solution in dilution, in diluted, at a diluted rate, it's two ounces per gallon of water, so it's very, very small. And it, you know, it's a product that has interesting characteristics where it won't pollinate or send butterflies and bees and that kind of thing, but it has, you know, very specific targets on ticks and mosquitoes. And to the, you know, the, you know, the spillage point or the refilling point, or do we have to empty things out? Once we, we, you know, allocate a schedule for the day, we route it through our computer software, we fill up our two hundred gallon tanks, the trucks leave the bays, they go in the service accounts, they come back, and nine times out of ten, those tanks are completely empty. Sometimes there's a little bit of a residual, but we're not having to like dump it out, put it back in. And so we're able to really move through product very easily. If there's any type of situation where we're moving, where we have to make a move, typically we do that when the tanks are empty. So that it's just for a weight purpose, if we don't have heavy equipment to be moving, you know, that much weight. So in other words, you know, it, it, the product is very contained on the property in fifty-five, in the fifty-five gallon drum in concentrate form. Once it gets diluted and mixed in the trucks, those trucks are out for road servicing accounts.
Okay, consultants, Dave, anything to say at this point or?
Nah, it was okay with the stormwater, then you stole my thunder about the tight tank. And, you know, Pete, I don't think you, you need to maybe just allocate space for it, it's kind of the same area you thought of concentrating the plantings where you pointed for the tight tank, so.
I know, just a conflict.
I, I mean, I, you know, I, it's good to be just a fiberglass tank in the ground, but allocate an area for it so then we don't have the, oh, the plantings that we want can't go here type of thing.
How large a tank would they, you think they should be?
It, it's up to them, they're gonna really never want to have to empty it, 'cause it gets really expensive, so it's gonna be like a cost benefit thing. You know, like, the bigger tank they put in, the less they'll have to empty it. The first time anyone ever washes their car in there, they have to pay for the, the tank to get pumped out will be the last time anyone washed their car in there. It, it's, it's part of the plumbing code, so it has to go in. I, I haven't been like rural police stations and stuff like that. Like a five hundred thousand gallons will, will last, but would never have to be pumped out for more than, god. Again, it's if someone screws up and like, you know, leaves a hose dip on or something like that.
Okay. Kim, I, I mean, I think we're looking for some advice on screen planning.
Yeah.
You know, if you could get that to us, we'll continue the hearing and then talk about that later. I have a couple of questions about the site. And I'm, I'm wondering, here's the deal, the site has no frontage. Does it front on the road? The only access to the site is over an easement. By the way, the driveway's not in the easement.
The driver was there before the easement.
Somebody, somebody screwed the easement up there.
Right, but we're, okay. I just needed to make that point.
Okay. And then the third thing.
I'm sorry, the easement's been there since prior to nineteen twenty, I believe. Have your name for the record, please. I'm sorry, Sarah Rann.
Whichever came first, it's chicken and egg, but it, it, the two don't, aren't contiguous. And the, the third thing is, it's a site with two uses. It's a, it's, it's a site with a resident, it's a commercial zone with a residence on it. And so my questions are, and maybe we need town council's advice on this. Are we okay conditioning what amounts to an increase in the nonconformity by conditioning this new building? For the, the nonconforming, it's, it's not conforming with respect to use, it's not conforming with respect to frontage, and probably, my guess is possibly with respect to access. So what process do we, should we go through, if any, to deal with those, those questions? My, my recommendation would be to talk to town council and see.
Why don't I talk with the building commissioner first?
That's fine.
And then we can go from there. I think your regulations state that they have to go through the site plan before they go through the ZVA process.
Right.
The planning board could certainly deal with the site plan issues and then condition it upon getting any and all necessary zoning relief from the zoning board.
Yeah.
And therefore you're not dealing with those issues. The ZVA was the rightful owner of those issues, would be dealing with.
Yeah, so we'd have to make our conditions contingent on whatever variances they might need if they need it. I mean, right now it's grandfathered, but with a new building.
But it's an expansion of a.
That's a expansion of at least two nonconformities. And I can understand that, this is why it would be interesting to talk to the building inspector. I can understand taking it over to the zoning board appeals for the frontage question and the easement question. I've got a question about the use, 'cause the ZVA can't issue a variance with respect to use. So that's why I was suggesting town council.
Why don't I talk with John? We'll come up with our list, or run it by legal counsel, if needed.
Okay. I just wanna be sure we're not, you know, off the reservation with respect to what we, what we can and can't do.
Well, you're only looking at it in terms of site plan review.
We are. But before we issue a decision, I'd like to know if we're able to issue a decision.
Okay.
All right, any questions or comments from anybody, anybody in the audience? Yes?
I have a question.
Did you just identify yourself?
Alan Worth, seventeen Warren Lane. The area, here, these are residences on Warren Lane. And there's no, and in this area you don't really talk about, I think, I mean, this is existing use. It looks like it's just, right now they just have stuff, you know, stone storage there. And I think this here is where the existing offices are. But, and I think you said that there's gonna be, this is where the.
Provisions.
Right, and I'm wondering if there's any provisions for screening? 'Cause right now the residential area kind of looks right into this. And is, is there anything about?
Well, okay, Ellen, one, one problem here is that we can't get, we can't place any conditions outside of the site limits. So I don't know where we'd put the screening. Everything's right up against the, the sight lines, so that's, you know, that's kind of a tough one for us.
Well, and, and it's, as we said, it's preexisting, preexisting, apparently nonconformal, but people have always accepted it. And, you know, in some ways, it's, we always feel that it's nice to be able to have some commercial areas in Weston where it's not so easy to do. But, you know, you wonder where the limits are.
Right.
Can I say one thing? You know, we, we totally understand that kind of the back part of that lot is, is a little unorganized. So, you know, part of the site plan with the proposed building is to help organize that, that area. We want it, you know, as much as the neighborhood probably wants it, 'cause it's gonna make us all be more efficient. And so by putting in the proposed building, getting some of those trucks out of that area, and then organizing what's already there, I think it's gonna be a better visually looking site for the areas.
It's, 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 it's a very steep slope. Yeah, yeah. And you'll, you'll still have to do, but maybe it'll be a little bit of.
It'll be a clean, yeah.
A little bit of a clean, yeah, it'll still be a commercial site, but maybe just less disorganized.
Isn't there a building, a shed building that over these houses? Which one is that?
The north building.
Yeah, shed.
It's kind of like, yeah, it's like a, it was the old coke hole storage building or?
So they're in that building.
We currently operate out of part of that, and then Weston operates out of part of that building now.
And then Oglesby's keeps the, the other part as a shed.
And then Oglesby's has the middle building, that's where their trucks, this area is. So by us moving out.
So they have two, two buildings, two storage buildings, one primarily lumber, and the other.
So that's on the front yard, the main, on the main site. That's at thirty-five.
Yeah, that's a whole. This is way back.
This is good part of that.
Yeah, it's way back.
Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, Kara Fleming. I live at two Warren Lane, and I've met the dead end that no one cares about. I just, first, I, you have to please respect that this is a neighborhood. There are children, a lot more children than there used to be down there. We've got new families moving in with the, lots more families, even have children that live down in Guncliff Lane now. So this area is used for kids on their bikes and to run around, but there are certain times of the day where we gotta pull them out of the road, because there are a lot of trucks, and there are a lot of trucks. So much so that the police have even said that Warren Avenue is a very dangerous road. We have no sidewalks. And our buses don't come down in the afternoon for the middle school and high school, they have to walk down that road, and you know that there are two blind turns. Also, with the, the Affordable Housing Trust putting in the new housing in the superintendent building, and water department in sixty-six sixty-eight avenue of sixty-six sixty-eight, Warren Ave, we've got more families, we've got more cars going down there. We also have the major trailhead for Jericho Forest, and there's gonna be the rail trail. So we've got even more cars coming down there. And you say that you want to expand your business, I don't wanna get in the way of that, I appreciate that, and I really appreciate that you're cleaning up that area too. But I just would like to see a lot of these groups start working together to try and solve these issues. 'Cause a lot of people recognize the fact that we've got a serious traffic issue, but everyone's just saying it and no one's helping us with it. And I don't think it's fair to put it all just on the neighborhood. So I wanted to let that know, that you say that your cars are coming back and forth twice a day, we're seeing trucks coming back and forth a lot more than just that. And it's not just your trucks, it's also Weston Landscaping, it's also Oglesby's, and it's just, and then the customers as well that go just to Oglesby's. It's, it's really a lot of traffic, and we're getting hit with even more.
Yeah, I mean, here's the thing, Kara, we can, we can condition things on the site. We could, if there was a big increase in traffic as a result of what they're proposing to do, we can take a look at that, but they're only increasing by a couple of, like, I think he said four cars. But we can't condition anything off the boundaries of the site. So we couldn't impose conditions on the road, for example. We're sort of hamstrung in that one.
I think the ZVA has control.
ZVA could do it, yeah. Maybe the thing is the ZVA. Yeah.
Could I ask related questions to that? So, Trevor, you'd mentioned the five trucks that you have currently. So the building that you're building, it could take up to how many trucks?
I mean, there's, there's four garage bays.
Okay.
And each, depth wise, you know, it's, it's fifty feet. So each truck is about, I don't know, seventeen feet or so in length, so you could fit about, about three.
Too deep.
In each, in each bay. So that's twelve vehicles. And some of the area will be designated for kind of shop space and heap equipment and stuff. So we'll be kind of taking away some of that parking area. The majority of it will be parking, of course, but we are also at a position now with having that fifth vehicle where we are.
that fifth vehicle where we are, you know, under capacity in terms of being able to meet our current demand for, for business. So we do have the ability to grow, and without having to, you know, increase our vehicle, our fleets at this point in time.
Yeah, I hear a nice plea out there for you guys to work together with neighborhood people.
And I'd like to-
Maybe even bring the old Ogleby's, bring Weston landscaping into it, and, you know, have a little, I don't know, a little coffee, beer.
Yeah. Well, I want, I want to touch on that a little bit, you know, I mean-
So that there is some coordination.
Yeah.
It's more efficient and it's organized.
So I totally agree. It's one big thing.
It's safer than that, too.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, we're committed, you know, to provide a service to our clients with transparency, and we're also committed to coexisting with the neighborhood. And we have a lot of passion for the town of Weston, and specifically Ogleby's, because it's a family business. And whatever we can do to work together, we totally will do that. You know, I don't know, you know, where we'd go from this meeting to have that conversation. Again, this is new to Brian and I, but we're more than happy to have that conversation. I mean, you know, quick proposal, you know, maybe it's putting a couple of signs that say "Slow Children." I mean, you know, making people, yeah, and again, I'm just, I'm offering, you know, something up here to-
Start with the exchange of phone numbers.
Yeah, to try to get the, the thing. But also, it is, it's three businesses, and it's, you know, the majority of that traffic is not our, is not our business. So we'd be willing to, you know, bring the group together, if that's what we need, if that's what we need.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good offer.
Rebecca Gardner, Seventeen Warren Place. I appreciate that you've brought in the conversation about the private businesses to reach out to the neighborhood, but it's also a responsibility of the town. Because with the Affordable Housing Trust coming in and developing the area, we, the town has to work on developing the potential for sidewalks as well. Because one of the reasons for the affordable housing to be there is because of its proximity to town, which means that it's walkable to town center. And it is something that we had brought up with other groups within the town, and everyone has basically passed us to another group. So I'm expressing Kara's frustration as well as the rest of the neighborhood, and I appreciate, you know, each time somebody says, "Yes, we're listening, we're listening," but it really isn't fair to just dump it on one particular group. I think everybody has to work together. It has to be the neighborhood, it has to be the town organizations, including sidewalk and whatever they are, and the, the private businesses, please. It cannot just be dumped on one group.
Right. When you first mentioned Kara, I was thinking to myself, this does not sound like a problem of Ogleby's, or which type of problem it is.
Yes.
That it is a problem in the road, it's certainly a lot of traffic there, and we're going to have more traffic, more families, and everything else. So this is, I get exactly what you mean. This is, this is a town issue.
Yeah, because we've, everybody's touching us, yep. So Sarah's here, and I'm sure when they come before, we'll all start on this. I mean, it is a town issue. That, that road is, I think, is up standard, because I drove down it, and it was after I made it down.
It's called that.
Yeah.
By the same token, you know, you're all part of that neighborhood, and the more cohesive your message is, whether it's to the Board of Selectmen, the DPW, the sidewalk committees, whoever, the more cohesive that is, the stronger the message. Somebody needs to fund a traffic study, seems to be. I mean, one thing that I picked up on, in the presentation, I was under the impression that there was going to be no one of five cars associated with this business, but actually, over the last several minutes, it occurs to me that if the business grows the way everybody would hope it would, it could be significantly more than five cars. It could be as, as many as perhaps fifteen vehicles. Four in the, in the garage, and at least two, two spaces, parking spaces outside. So-
Where do you come up with fifteen?
Four in the garage, and that's fourteen.
But those are just spots. Those are just spots.
Yeah.
These aren't going to be-
But they're, they're not spots where people would park?
They, they could be, but we're not, again, I think it's kind of laying out the land the best way we can. It's not-
Well, how many would you say have it?
We have nine, we have nine, we have nine employees that show up, and five of which replace their car for the day with one of our trucks. So there's always, there's nine vehicles parked in that building as proposed on the plan.
What happens five or ten years down the road when you have ten trucks? Because business is good.
Right.
So then you have a total of fourteen.
So we're also, we're in the process of opening satellite locations in Mass. So we actually have a location on Vineyard. We also have a location in Chatham, and that's in efforts to help support that, that business.
Understood, but it would be helpful to have an idea of what you project the maximum number of cars will be.
Right.
Connected with your facility.
Right.
As opposed to the current level.
Well, for example, it's-
We did have us nine years to get to a point where we have five vehicles, and, you know, that's kind of the growth that we're experiencing, we have been experiencing year to year. So, you know, again, it's, maybe we double the vehicle size in another nine years.
But not necessarily in this location.
Exactly.
So you, I'm, I'm sorry, that's reflecting the question. The question is, is the answer to the question that you, that you expect the maximum number of vehicles in, say, five years to be, what, what would you project?
I would say-
You must have a business plan, so.
We do have a business plan. We're executing that. But, I mean, what, so, we can project, I guess, all day, right? But you want kind of like what's, what's existing, right?
If you, if you don't answer correctly, in five years, we're going to put you in the stocks. It's just, it's just a rough idea of where you think-
So this goes back to all of us kind of getting together, right? And like being a cohesive unit, like the neighbors and businesses in town.
No, it's a different question. It's just a simple question.
Okay.
Granted, it's your business plan, say you're going to be in terms of vehicles on this site in, say, five years.
What's the maximum employee that you can house in this building? In the building? I mean, you've got five in-house now.
Capacity-wise.
Don't leave drivers. Can you fit ten? Can you fit thirty in that building?
Couldn't fit thirty in the building.
Okay, so we're already maxed out at thirty, so it's down from there. That's all he's asking.
Okay.
What's the max number of in-house?
What's the maximum impact would be?
So maximum impact would probably be doubling the size of the fleet, and then doubling the size of the office personnel.
And that would be, how many?
So ten office personnel at that point.
It would be eight office personnel in ten trucks.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen versus-
Versus nine.
Nine.
And that's a top end.
That's the max capacity.
That's a max capacity.
Well, that was a question you asked.
Yes, it was a question I asked, and then how would that translate into vehicle trips a day?
You would double.
So you were figuring, it'd be about twenty-five, we'd have one that-
I thought you said twelve.
Twelve additional.
Additional vehicle trips.
That's actually right, but that was for five.
That was, yeah.
That was for five cars.
That wasn't for nine.
Four, four, it wasn't for nine.
Four office personnel.
Well, that's right, because five of them are already there, right? So it was for the four.
Five more, right. So the increase would be thirteen.
So it'd be five new trucks, is what we're talking about, and so five new, five new-
We'd be doubling.
We'd be doubling. I'd be ten, and so about twenty, twenty-five trips. Additional trips.
Additional to twelve.
So it's thirty-five.
And we can be out of business tomorrow, too.
Yeah, sure. But somebody else will be in the building.
That's a suggestion, perhaps they provide us with their sixteen, because it's getting, we, we have other.
I'm actually middle.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
So, so that I can get this straight, what, what would you like us to provide you so that we can get a proposal? Do you want, you want us to outline with number of trips, doubling the size of our business over the course of the next nine years?
Well, yeah, I mean, what is your projection for maximum occupancy of the building? That's, that's what we're asking. And what would that, how would that translate into vehicle trips? And then how, how does that compare with existing vehicle trips? So we're trying to get a handle on how much more intense this use is going to contribute when you compare it with other new traffic that's going up and down Warren Avenue. I mean, I'm listening to some neighbors that are pretty concerned that it's getting to be-
And I guess in the immediate timeframe, looking at, you know, two to three years, we've got, you know, five vehicle fleet now. I wouldn't assume that we would be increasing it much more than that.
All right, well-
But we can provide you with the numbers-
Yeah, that would be helpful.
In written form, if that, you know, can help.
That would, I think it would be helpful for us to understand how this works.
I have a question, because it, really, it's the whole site, and the vehicles in the whole site. And they don't have the most vehicles, Weston Treating Landscape does. And my question is, what is the by right use of the site, and, and what limitations can you put on, on the site in terms of total number of vehicles at, at the site? You know, not just them, but also everybody else.
That's where I'm at.
And also in hours of operation, that kind of thing. What are the-
But we need to get some numbers first.
First, I mean, on, on, to answer part of that, Weston Landscape, we had, we approached them with that, and they've, you know, been at the same size they've been at for the last ten years. That was the answer we were given. And they don't plan to grow anymore in terms of trucks. What they do is they replace out their old trucks with new trucks, and they're not, they're not at a point right now in, I think, it feels clear that we're trying to expand geographically.
Said if anything, he wants to reduce the size a little as he's getting older.
So maybe their trucks have increased, but the neighbors have, they're stinking the number of trucks.
Okay. There's also a lot more kids around now, which hinders the sensitivity.
And they're a lot, right, a lot more children.
Yeah, they're just, they're, it's, they're not coming down in the morning, and they're leaving in the morning, and then coming back in the afternoon, leaving in the afternoon. They're up and down.
Right.
And it's weekends, too.
When we were talking about that, that piece, we were talking specifically to our business.
I am.
We weren't talking to their business, so just to clarify that.
Yeah. One more question, then we'll have to-
Can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
And I'm, I'm sorry, cognizant of your time, but, and just one last piece on the, sort of the intensity of use. So then the, the last piece to figuring this out is, is would Ogleby's be able to add tenants or otherwise reutilize the space that's now being used by your trucks? Because I, as I understand it, you now fill up your trucks in that back area, I'm sorry, that, yeah, exactly. And so with you moved out of there, does that sort of open up new areas?
Wasn't that, is it going to go in there?
They're going to move in.
Yeah, as part of the site cleanup, they're going to, they're going to take some of the things that are out, you know, snowplows and whatnot, and, and part of that attempt to reorganize the yard, they're going to be, you know, storing their things in those places.
Okay. So just, so, I, I wrote a letter to the planning board on behalf of the Weston Affordable Housing Trust, I'm the chair of the housing trust, and we've sort of alluded to this, but, so the housing trust has been working for a number of years on behalf of the town to look at the town-owned land that abuts, immediately abuts this property, and the easement that is the source of access to this lot cuts across the town-owned land. So we're at the stage now, you know, we've been using town-appropriated money to look at feasibility and design studies, and we're now at the point where we're trying to develop construction plans for the whole property, which straddles Warren Ave, and the superintendent's house is the, the existing one family that's going to be converted to a two-family, that's at sort of high atop the hill and looks straight out at the area that is the proposed building. And so I don't know, I'm a little unclear as to the scope of what you look at and the legal standards and what the ZBA looks at, but just bullet points of like our big concerns, just in terms of as the, as the future hopefully abutter to the project, and, and for our property to be a residential use, two, two sets of tenants living in this house. They now, if they were living there today, would be looking out at trees. Yes, they'd be looking out at some sort of disorganized parking on a gravel area, but not really clearly in their line of sight. And with the proposed building, first, I'm not sure of the exact height, but I imagine it's going to be at least one story-
Twenty-five feet, is it?
Twenty-five feet high. It's sited so far at the front as to be, as to have a real impact on the abutter, whereas the back edge of this whole parcel looks out on abandoned railroad tracks. And so just a big question is, why on earth is it sited there when, if you're, if you're, if you should be caring about the impact on the neighborhood, is there any way that this could be sited at the back of the lot? And when I say the back, I mean, as we're looking at this plan, the right, the right upper corner, maybe there's not. Is there any way it could be sited further back so that, again, there's less of an impact? Because it's a little hard to judge, but as I, from the sidewalk, it looks like all the people living in that one apartment will be staring out of the building with lights that, you know, motion detector lights, I think, would make a difference, but with the amount of wildlife we have around, I know our neighbors' motion detector lights are on constantly. So if there's quite a bit of lighting on that building, that's, that's another issue. You may be removing lighting in the back, which is great, I think, and it may help. Alan, I'm not sure, your neighborhood in the back there may be impacted by that removal of lighting. No? But the, the lighting is moving to a place where not only the superintendent's house, but also the brick building, at least one of the apartments, I, I think, will be looking out at that. So intensity of use, the siding of the building, and, gosh, there's one other thing. Yes, the, the one other thing, which raises a couple of questions, just about the increased noise from what might be going on in that building, and I, I don't know if that's true, but, so the rain collection basins, is there like, when you dilute your material, is there like some process that there are people who are like emptying stuff out, or machines emptying stuff out, or is it done?
There is an electric pump that runs, that pumps the water out of the twenty, four-hundred gallon tanks and into the trucks, the products, the little mix. But that pump is one that we've taken out of, it was used previously in a home to pump water, well, above water in a home. So I mean, it's not, you wouldn't be able to hear it. It's not an noise pump. It's not like it's a big, you know, we're not running, you know, a huge mixer or anything of that nature.
And then if the, if the bays of the garage were open during the day while people were working inside, the building-
Technicians would be gone at that point. Theory would be more noise-canceling than our operations, which take place outside currently.
Got it.
You're putting a generator on the building, are you?
We're not, no.
No.
Not during work.
We looked at, yeah, we looked at it, and we just said, this isn't necessary for, for our operations.
Got it.
If it snows, we don't have anyone coming in.
Right.
You know, want people to be safe, so.
And so the extent that we get to this, you know, in terms of the screening, you know, as I was mentioning, three feet, three-foot burden dunders won't help much along a twenty-five foot building, so.
Do my, my life proposes that there's a long line of town property that the town could put plantings on to block what they don't want to see from their angle?
Well, I mean, usually the people who are changing the, the impact-
There's going to be a two-family house there, right?
There's been a house there for, ever.
Right, and if they have any problems with that, yeah.
Well, but they haven't had a building in that backyard.
It's a separate lot, it's going to change.
I'm sure a lot of you could be talking to us that we crave, but could you identify yourself, I'm sorry?
I thought it was Kevin Widdmore.
Kevin Widdmore.
Yes, Ogleby's. Yes, I own that lot.
I also, I mean, just as, I, I understand what you're saying. I think it's a practical matter because of the way the land dips down. I don't know that we, I mean, we have to plant a thirty-foot tree to be able to absolutely-
My property would have to, your property would have to, because you're, you're up there higher than down there.
You're talking about the house right here, right?
The land slopes-
So you- So you could put some screening plants right there, which is not to say I'm not concerned about where this building is and how difficult it is to screen this building from this house. I do think it's an issue. And Kim, are you okay with our providing? Because I thought you usually not okay with our providing.
They were.
We need Kim's.
I heard our providing being.
What about the footprint relocation? Is that, what was it that made you put that building right in that corner? Are there constraints that we, that we're not, that we don't know about?
Well, I think it's to, again, kind of divide the property into sections where, you know, there is dedicated space to each tenant that's operating at that, in that property. If you were to put this building, what was maybe suggested here, it would restrict all access to this front side of the building, and that's where Western Landscaping operates out of.
What about moving it down four fingers up?
You move it down, you're moving it closer.
No, no, the other way.
To the right.
Down along the setback line.
You start to bottleneck a little bit for the trucks that are trying to maneuver it out of the site as well. And is this, you have the, you said the wetland buffer line that you also run into.
It's just a setback line. He's right on the two setbacks right now. He's, one corner of the building's on one setback and the other corner's on the other setback. But, so if you moved off the setback a little bit, that side setback, I mean, it's worth looking at.
I think, I think the point, if you shift this down, you're starting to pinch this bottleneck here. Also, the more you shift this way, the less available space you have for operations and everything else.
Were you, were you just shoehorning the cars in before? Could you just, we just.
No, no, there's, there's some, there's some extrover there.
On the other hand, if it shifted down, what will end up on the other side, the left of that building will be the parking spaces.
Well, maybe not.
Where are the garage doors in the building?
Well, but if they're already looking for.
Yeah. And what about, and what about the garage doors for the other half of the building? For the, for the Western.
For the barn? There's bays on either side, or openings on either side on the top part of that building. There's a garage door on the bottom part on the left side. There's also bays on the right side, running all the way up, and then there's.
Sounds like there's bays on both of the buildings.
There's, there's.
Inside or outside?
Yeah, there's bays on the right side, very much distinguished, and there's some elevated garage door space and storage space on the right side. There's also.
Could you just point out where all the garage doors are?
Yeah, we should probably get this, should probably get this, like.
I mean, you can use the drawings there.
Yeah, well, this is just a little better. So there's, there's bays kind of going all along here.
Right.
Right, and then there's a door here, and then there's a garage door here that's storage, and there's another door here, and then there's some doors right here.
But those are garage doors, are they?
There's access to all of these areas here.
Oh, those garage doors.
I don't know exactly. Never go back there. They are garage doors, but they're like receiving bays, so you can't pull a vehicle into it.
Right, just pull up next to it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it could be.
So if you were out there, it'd be a little tight, but it wouldn't be total conflict with their trucks and stuff. Is there using the other side?
No, this is their side, really. And then we are operating out of this kind of corner here, and then this is some private storage for the owners of Ogilby's.
I think you can see that, you know, if you look at this, you've got trucks that are coming in and out here and here, and you start shifting this building down, this, that space in between it gets tighter and tighter.
I'm just not sure I see it as more of a pinch point than what you show there.
By shifting this down?
The other issue is that you've got to take this garage door, which is a single garage door for this building here, and you've got Ogilby's with their flatbed vehicles, which have a very large wheelbase. It wouldn't be able to make that, that turn back in. Right now, we've designed it so that the, you know, larger vehicles can pull up and then back into the garage. There'd be no way to make the turn.
So that's why you should order it into the.
Yeah, again, it's to optimize the space, the usage.
Well, I guess we're just asking you to step in to see if there's anything we can do.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, at this point, that's probably, there are a lot of fish to fry that some of them are bigger than that. So we'll continue this.
Can I just bring up, I'm going to check up into the address? The color of the building? Call me crazy, but I don't think sandstone is a color that disappears into the woods or what have you. I think it needs to be a darker color, whether it's gray, a gray, a brown, or something like that. I would just look at other colors that really do disappear more, because that's just very light. At least it looks light. And this may not be an accurate representation of the colors, but I might want to bring in the real, bring in the real color chips.
Right.
Could they darken just the end, perhaps?
Well, you see more than the end, especially from that house. I don't know, if you could maybe just bring in the real color chips and look at some darker colors.
Yeah, I mean, okay. Yeah. Let's see what's available for the manufacturer.
Not that much darker than white.
Yeah.
White doesn't disappear, or white maybe doesn't disappear more.
I know you want to wrap this up, but we've talked about a lot of different things, but honestly, I've only come up with five issues. One is putting a tight tank on the plan. That could be done easily. Landscaping, a little more challenging issue, whether we can screen, perhaps putting some things, we'll work with Kim on that. Third is the business plan, how many additional trips in the next five, 10 years, a projection. Fourth is an issue you guys are going to look into, which is, what is the, can you expand the non-conforming use? And five, which you just brought up, let's just look at different colors. Are there anything?
Yes, moving the building.
The number one was seeing if there's any way you can move that down. It doesn't have, our two architects here say they really feel that it probably could be slid down a little bit, and it would increase the amount of area.
Is there something critical about the depth of the building, for example? Can it be a little bit narrower so that if you moved it a little further that way, you could lengthen it and make it a little narrower? Is that rectangle, is that cast in concrete or?
For us, with, with how we've designed the office space, which is 2,500 square foot mezzanine, to have it working the way we want it to work, this is the design that we came up with architect and manufacturer, and that cost, you know, a significant amount of money, and, you know, we're young and on a pretty significant budget. So to go back and rework plans, I mean, you know, we're kind of out of our budget of options, so. We thought that this was going to optimize the office space and the field technician base in operations the best, given the site and its current.
What is the critical dimension? What, the critical, the, right now, it's, I think you said it was 30 feet, the, no, 50 feet deep. 50 feet deep, that 50-foot dimension, is that, what is it that, that is driving that internally? What's the, what's the, what's the critical piece inside?
It's a structural.
The structural.
It's a loft space coupled with a high vaulted space for our trucks in operation.
And the trucks can fit underneath that space.
Some of them can, yeah. The mezzanine level is high enough for the.
Okay, well, take a look at it.
Okay. I have a color palette here. The manufacturer that we work with is very specific. Is there, you know, a color that you recommend?
Just seeing this, that color's a lot better than in the, than your.
Okay, so let's get.
What color is this?
Sandstone.
I could go. It's like the strength is better, it could move it further away, more swing, that's just for your purposes.
Because I don't know. Forty-four, that's still why they want it.
So, you're.
Yeah, those are, the trim colors are on the bottom, and then you have, you know, the colors on the top are kind of our option for the site. They can mix and match.
But certainly what. But.
Okay.
Okay, I think the sandstone is fine, then, if we see the.
Okay.
Oh, this, yeah.
Yeah, this is what I would.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Okay.
So what, okay.
So that was an easy fix.
So the color is okay?
Color is okay.
Yeah.
Check.
Okay.
All right.
So we'll continue.
So are you, you're asking us to review the size and placement, but if we come to a conclusion, this is the best place, then this is the best place?
That's the way it is.
Okay, but we'll give it an honest effort.
Yeah, like, could the building be 45 feet deep? Okay.
I can imagine it can be that hugely expensive for them to just maybe crank in another set of numbers and push the button and watch the tag change.
You'd be surprised.
I'm sure I'd be surprised.
You'd be surprised.
I'm sure if you make the phone call, it's.
Standard building footprint for the companies making the builds.
Oh, really? Oh, so that's it.
It's a prefab.
Oh, thanks.
That's, that's the.
There we go.
I don't know what different.
Is that another one then checked off?
Well, I mean, sometimes, sometimes I'll give it to you in five-foot increments. It's not necessarily absolute with prefab companies. Sometimes they'll, they have increments that they didn't want to let.
All of this building inside is really directly a result primarily of trying to get more room to screen. Is that correct?
And get it in a better location.
Get it out of that light, you know, sun, that view, that mistake. If you can move it back a little bit.
That would help. Maybe you can.
Five feet, 10 feet, whatever you can do. Anything would be helpful.
So we continue to 8:30 on June 18?
Cool.
Yeah, by that time, we should have some answers on some of the other questions we have about that, like at 4:00.
4:00.
Okay.
So the, yeah, the board and our consultants have a chance to look it over.
Is it possible to get, is this card from all of you, so I can send you digital copies of everything that I'm submitting?
Send a digital copy to me.
And then you'll distribute it out. Okay. Along with hard copy.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's June 18?